Good evening and welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, February 5th. May I have the roll call, please?
Peg Coniff.
Here.
Salem Derby.
Present.
Omar Gomez.
Here.
JP Kuzinski.
Here.
Bill Lynch.
Here.
Tom Peak.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Here.
Owen Zarek.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united as one with liberty and justice for all.
Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 22nd?
Second.
Can I?
Any discussion?
Discussion?
Yes.
No, I just wanted to add the last name to Pamela, who public spoke.
Okay.
Is that a name I know?
What is it?
It's Matsuda hyphen Dunn. So her last name is M.A.T.S.U.D.A hyphen Dunn, D.U.N.N.
Okay. So can we have a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain. That's two abstentions? Okay. Motion carries. Okay, before we start public speak tonight, we want to have a couple of minutes to celebrate the We The People students and recognize their significant accomplishment that they did a few weeks ago. So I'm gonna come up to the podium. It's just deserving of that. Counselor Gomez, please.
So, as one who rarely gets more than one question on Jeopardy correct, I applaud what you guys have done. It is amazing. It's amazing that the school, the students, the team has done this for three years. How many in total? Four? Four years in total and three years in a row. It's amazing. And you guys deserve so much credit for the work you've put into it. I know it was not easy. I couldn't have done it, but I applaud you because we definitely need constitutional scholars right now more than ever. So thank you for doing that. So what we'd like to do tonight is to really just recognize you with a certificate. It does not come with a check, unfortunately, but I want you to remember that an entire city is proud of you and you should take that with you as you go forward. That this entire city was pulling for you and you have made us so, so proud. And so we thank you for that. So I don't know how many of the mentors are here, but I know that there were a few people that helped get you to where you are.
They're not.
They're not, okay. I will mention Nancy Sykes, Carissa Bilski, Hannah Wacinski?
Wazinski.
Wazinski. We knew that was gonna happen. And Stephen Linsky. All of those folks have helped you to get to where you are, but certainly you wouldn't be here without your teacher, Kelly Brown. You know, as someone who is married to a teacher, I know that the work that you do is unbelievably difficult and long hours and you don't often get a lot of thanks, but you're getting some tonight because you deserve it. It's a hard job and I know that they're appreciative and we certainly are. So thank you, Kelly. I don't know if you're all here, so if I call out your name and you're not here, just let me know.
Say so.
So just come up, shake your hand, and you can smile at Pat Bruff for a picture. Mackenzie Bates. Gabby Benoit.
Yeah.
Ellie Chapwa. That's what I said. Gabe Columback. Josh Dameworth. I don't even look like Nancy Pelosi. Chelsea Indick? Kylie Kuridchik?
That was pretty close.
Really? Zacharia? Is it Zacharia?
You got it.
Congratulations. Sam Papadellis. Congratulations. Lucia Ray? Jonah Slagel? Oh, alright, okay. It's Dutch, yeah, alright. Alice Wanamaker. That one's easy. Amelia Wilson? Congratulations. And that was it. So thank you all. You guys are unbelievable. We are so proud of you and thank you for coming tonight so that we could kind of gush over you. Appreciate that. All right. If you would like to depart, just the We The People.
Wait, wait, don't leave.
We The People, people. You may say something.
I just wanted to talk to all you students. I remember a long time ago, when I was in high school, the teacher that influenced me the most. To this day, I remember what he said and what he did. Remember what Kelly Brown has done for you. Because someday, when you're the state representative, the senator from Massachusetts, it all started here with her. She's a superstar, as far as I'm concerned. So remember Kelly for the rest of your lives. Thank you.
Big picture. Can I get a good picture?
Sure. If you won't be too disruptive.
Can all of you come over here? You guys all stand up?
Oh, thank you, Pat.
They're the stars, why should we be in the picture?
Take your time. Get in there, some could stand, some could stand. Back as close up to the thing as you can.
Hope you have a super wide angle.
It's pretty tricky with that thing.
Don't fall, we don't have liability insurance.
We have liability insurance.
Excellent. Excellent. Alright, big smiles for everybody. Alright, counselors slide down. You guys are good.
Do not let this go to your heads, this power.
Alright, so we're gonna do a couple, okay? One, two, three. And one more. As you know. Alright, big smiles, one, two, three. And one more. Awesome, thanks, guys.
Thanks, Pat. Thank you. Thank you all, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're so proud.
Counselors, you may be seated.
If you guys wanna take a quick minute and hit the road. Well, you're welcome to stay. You won't hurt our feelings if you wanna go. But you're absolutely welcome to stay. Just like taking a minute to take a walk.
I meant, this is real government. All the other governments don't matter. All government is local.
We're the only ones that do that.
Yeah, exactly.
Those do nothing Democrats.
Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public speak. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak about something not on the agenda? Just state your name and the address.
Hi, David Boyle, 146 Hoyok Street. If I could, I'd like to make some comments regarding the dog park. Sorry. Okay. I apologize in advance, I'm gonna be a little bit harsh. I realize that a lot of work has gone into it, there's been meetings held, research done. I've only gone to one meeting myself. Thirty-one years ago, I built a house on 125 Oliver Street. I lived there for 10 years, so I know the neighborhood very well. And the bottom line is, I believe the proposed location is a very poor choice for the following reasons. Approximately 25 years ago, maybe 20 years ago, we had opportunity to build a skateboard park due to a tragedy. Money was raised, efforts were put forward, a friends group was created, and it belonged in the park all day long, 110 percent. Park didn't want it. We put it behind the mills before the mill revitalization. It became an albatross, an embarrassment, and it was finally discarded. And partly because people were afraid to go there and undesirables were going there. And it belonged in a park where people go, to be seen. And skateboarders like to be seen. So that was one mistake that was made. I hate to see us repeat the same thing by putting something far away. The recent revitalization of town has a lot of reasons, a lot of things, I don't need to rehash them, but one thing that's understated is that there's cross connections. The rail trail feeds the arts, the rail trail feeds entertainment, vice versa. And the park is a big part of that. And right now, there's some behind the scenes initiatives to have more connections from the rail trail to the park, connections from Whitebrook, the new middle school to the park. And so we're drawing people of, in intergenerational, of all ages, to do things together. So, you know, I'm past that stage, but I could see if I was down there at the ball field with my kids, they could be practicing ball, I could go to the dog park, things like that. I have nine dogs and I'm lucky, I have 10 acres, so. But I bought the park and I walked to the park, well, I have to walk through a stream or swamp, but I bought the park. The other example quickly I want to bring up is the fish ladder. I'm not gonna rehash the fish ladder, because a whole lot, but there was money available. The mayor at that time wanted to put the fish ladder in for a featheredness cap, the money was available. Melissa Grater from the Fish and Wildlife Service, who knew that the fish ladder in the dam is degrading the river, still went ahead because it was money. The idea with the federal government is money allocated has to be spent. You know, her boss was a politician, a public appointee, and he said, basically told her, this money will be spent, one way or another. Ten to 15 years from now, someone will be speaking to the city about taking down that dam. You know, we have climate chaos going on, the temperature of that river has risen one degree in the past 10 years, and the silt that's building up behind the dam is still there. So, but we took the money because the money was there. Sometimes, just because something's available, doesn't mean you should jump on it. I understand finances, I understand public finances, I understand the need to do things. One other little problem with the fish ladder was, there was no piggyback. It'd been nice if the fish ladder money, if some of it, the 1.7 million, $800,000 over budget, had gone in to fix the dam, so to speak, or the waterworks building. But it was all for the fish ladder, which is of no use. And, you know, if someone's truthful in the city, the people that have to take care of it don't want to take care of it. So sometimes you should, you know, not look a gift horse in the mouth, but be skeptical. The other thing is our city's green ideals. Now, that particular parcel, some people have called it a old growth forest. It's a forest that desperately needs to be managed. Pine trees are falling crisscross, but it is a treat area. So we have green ideals, we're part of green communities, so we're gonna go cut down trees so that we can drive to a dog park. That doesn't really fit with green ideals. I understand what's happening, I understand the park's resistance, I understand the park politics, I understand that the city council can't tell the park that we're gonna do this. But the park is being mismanaged, there's lack of vision, we have a jewel, and we're still in the 1980s mindset, and we need to get into the 21st century. I really apologize, because I know it's a lot of hard work and people want to do this. I know that there's a friends group getting together, but I'm annoyed, or disappointed or annoyed, because the park, this is a missed opportunity. The park should be pursuing this grant way before the people that want it, I'm sorry, got involved. And not only that, they should be looking at it from the point of view of, just say, for example, the dog park costs $200,000, well, while we're doing the dog, while we're doing the dog park, maybe we can do something at the same time and piggyback it. The one minute, though, you know, I resent that a little bit because...
We have to start a public meeting.
I understand, but when the signs come on our property, they're there all the time.
I understand.
Okay. Well, I'll wrap it up. I believe this proposal should be tabled until the Park and Rec Commission is replaced and the Parks and Director is replaced. Because they're not gonna change, they're territorial, they don't see the big picture, and in the end, they'll probably end up taking care of the dog park on Oliver Street, and they won't do a good job. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public who would like to speak? Your name and address, please.
Good evening, everyone. Allison Leclair. I live on Meadow Lane in South Rock, but I'm really the school superintendent, that's why I'm here. Before you, this evening, and I think you're gonna vote to move it to committee, but I just wanted to give you an explanation briefly. You have a request to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the school department on behalf of getting reimbursed for foster care transportation. Under the new Student Opportunity Act at the state level, we have the opportunity, as a school district, to submit paperwork to get reimbursed up to 20 percent for foster care transportation. And what that means is, students that live and go to school in East Hampton, if they are removed from their home and put into DCF foster care, they could get a placement outside of East Hampton. That's very often what happens, because we have limited placements and DCF can put them wherever. So if we have a student, for example, that goes from their home in East Hampton and they get placed in a DCF placement in, say, Greenfield, we as a school are obligated to transport them back and forth from their DCF placement every day to continue attending our school in East Hampton. We eat that cost currently, to the tune of over $80,000 in foster care reimbursement. I mean, in foster care transportation. So the state is now recognizing that communities are drowning in this expense. And we have no say in the DCF placements. DCF puts children where they think it's best. So we have to, all of a sudden, come up with a van or a bus that can transport these children. So it's a real hardship on us as a school district. So we would really appreciate it if you would allow us to enter into this memorandum so that we can at least submit paperwork for up to 20 percent of that currently. I think it's about $86,000 this year. Thank you.
Excuse me, Dr. Leclair?
Yes.
Just a clarification.
Yes.
You need to have this memorandum of understanding back to the state by March 1st?
Correct.
Okay, so we need to get this done quickly.
Yes, one month. Thank you.
Dr. Leclair?
Yep.
The Rules Committee meeting is meeting on this on the 17th. I hope you're available.
Oh, perfect.
It is President's Day, I don't know if that matters, but...
That's okay.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Then we can bring it forward.
Do you want to do it now?
Oh, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we move the request for the school superintendent to authorize entering into a memorandum of understanding to Rules Committee for review.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the memorandum of understanding. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes. Okay. I'll take, yes?
If I move that, we open. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, public hearing is now open. We're gonna be discussing supplemental appropriations. Pastor President Rist, if you may.
Yes, the first one is $70,447.9 for the Blue Cross Blue Shield Health Insurance Liability to provide the employee's share of health insurance not paid by employees in July due to an insurance holiday. As those of you who are on the council, all of us except Counselor Rothschild, might remember, we had a collective bargaining issue with the healthcare system, and it ended up where we had an agreement, I think it's a three-year agreement with the collective bargaining units that the mayor negotiated, where we would give a premium holiday to make up for increases in our health insurance. This is the funding to cover it for the rest of this fiscal year. During the meeting, we did ask what would be the cost moving forward, and our auditor mentioned that because the premiums weren't going up next fiscal year, there would be no cost. However, we were concerned that the language was confusing, and I'm wondering if either the mayor or Val, you could clear that up, although I don't think it's pertinent, I mean, this has to be done for this year. We were curious if we will have to pay this next fiscal year. And the language in it, in the contract, was a little confusing, and you were gonna look it up. If you didn't, it's okay, but... Val, am I here?
Yes, we spoke with our consultant and lawyer who helped us negotiate this, and that the premium is not going up more than 2 percent, therefore, there will be no premium holiday this July.
So we're certain of that? Thank you. So next year, we won't have to pay this? That's great.
Right. It was just a one-week premium holiday, and we won't.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Any discussions?
No questions.
Counselor Kuzinski?
I had some questions of the mayor. I remember the health insurance issue, I remember the premium, the copays...
Yeah.
Were to go up.
Good.
I remember that there would be planned savings, however.
Yes.
Because the employees were paying more in copays, and that would allow the plan to save money, and there was supposed to be money coming back to the city, if I recall correctly. Do you remember those figures, or Val remember those figures?
No, I remember those figures.
In terms of, I thought that was a lot of where the offset was gonna come, for the employees to receive a holiday, and those funds would be provided by the savings, the planned savings.
Correct, but also, I mean, costs of everything go up, and the reason why we changed the plan and needed to in negotiating with health insurance companies, because costs are going up, and we hadn't had an increase in quite some time. So to stay competitive and position ourselves for future negotiations with health insurance companies through the trust, we didn't give all the savings back to the employee. We need to keep a certain amount in reserves, and this year is a great example, because we took our reserves in the trust, and the trust voted to put them back into the policy, which made no change. So we can put money to make no change, keep our reserves up, because we did have savings two years ago.
Counselor Rist?
I would just kinda comment, I think one of the main issues for the trust was solvency going forward, and that the increases in copays and premiums would help resolve this. Collective bargaining units wanted some help, and they got it. And I believe the reason we, as the mayor said, the reason we don't see premium increases is because they, the entire trust, and this is across the board of all the cities and towns that participate, were able to keep the premiums down to nothing this year, no increases. And I think that's part of the reason that we have...
I mean, we're competitive in negotiation, but I think the other is that the trust is very good at taking a part of the surplus, like you have a certain number of months' claims that the trust stays in the bank, you know, to leverage it.
Right.
We can use a certain amount of that, or the trust can vote to use a certain amount of that, to keep the premium at the same level. So there was probably some, a little bit of both. That said, you know, we can't, we've seen other trusts do that, like in Amherst, which is now insolvent, because they always took the savings and they brought it back to the employees, and then there was a big kick-up in claims, and there was no, you know... It's wonderful to have $100,000 in the bank when you're looking at your nine-year-old. And when your nine-year-old turns 16 and you think you got 110, and you're set, and you realize that's only gonna pay for a fourth of college. I mean, I think the big amount of surplus, the number, goes fast when we're talking about healthcare. And I think we all know, from the negotiations, you know, with CBA and what we see in the news, is that it's wildly unpredictable, and the safety of the trust is actually that surplus. It's a tricky balance.
Any other comments? Questions?
I just wanted to mention that there is another...
Just identify yourself back. Identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For the people watching.
Val Bernier, the city auditor.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention that there is another half holiday in January, and the assessors have agreed to release excess overlay to cover that one, so it's about approximately half of the cost of this one, but it won't be coming from free cash. So as soon as the numbers are put together, we'll be submitting that also.
Counselor Rist?
We wanna ask public, I guess.
Oh, is there anyone from the public? Annette? Okay. Anyone from the public? Okay.
Thank you. Then I'll make a motion for the approval, for full council approval of the following appropriation, $70,444.79 from Free Cash, $70,444.79, to the Blue Cross Blue Shield Health Insurance Liability, for the purpose to provide the employee's share of health insurance not paid by employees in July due to an insurance holiday provided by the city. Second.
We have a motion and a second to use the, to appropriate money from Free Cash for the health insurance liability. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm gonna abstain because of the conflict with my employer. Motion pass.
The next appropriation is $34,940.60 for various items necessary for the fire department. I'll ask Chief Modder to come up and explain the repairs, the built-in deficits, et cetera, stretchers, hydraulic lifts, everything that has to happen.
Thermometers.
Thermometers, whatever.
Good evening, David Modder, Fire Chief. So the request before you is for the ambulance budget. The first one, 5142 EMS incentive, $17,000. That is the majority from a built-in deficit through the budget process of last year, and a small portion is the city's match for the EMS incentive for the four new firefighters. 5483 repairs to vehicles, $8,000. So I don't remember the exact budget amount, I think it's around $5,000 a year. One month into the fiscal year, I had an ambulance go out of service, and it was a $9,000 repair right off the bat. And it's continued with various, so to date, I just had another ambulance out of service for a week. I'm at $13,000 in ambulance repairs this fiscal year, and I'm hoping I can sneak through without any more failures. But just to give you an idea, on the fleet, so the newest one is a 2018, that's got 30,000 miles on it. The second is a 2014, that's got 97,000 miles on it. The oldest is a 2010 chassis, the cabin, the wheels, and the box in the back is 2,000, and that has 104,000 miles on it. So the fleet ages, and those aren't like 104,000 miles on your car, these are hard. The example is Kia.
We have a motion and a second to use the, to appropriate money from Free Cash for the health insurance liability. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm going to abstain because of the conflict with my employer. Motion pass.
The next appropriation is $34,940.60 for various items necessary for the fire department. I'll ask Chief Modder to come up and explain the repairs, the built-in deficits, et cetera, stretchers, hydraulic lifts, everything that has to happen.
Thermometers.
Thermometers, whatever.
Good evening. David Modder, Fire Chief. So the request before you is for the ambulance budget. The first one, 5142 EMS incentive, $17,000. That is the majority from a built-in deficit to the budget process of last year, and a small portion is the city's match for the EMS incentive for the four new firefighters. 5483 repairs to vehicles, $8,000. So I don't remember the exact budget amount. I think it's around $5,000 a year. One month into the fiscal year, I had an ambulance go out of service, and it was a $9,000 repair right off the bat. And it's continued with various, so to date, I just had another ambulance out of service for a week. I'm at $13,000 in ambulance repairs this fiscal year, and I'm hoping I can sneak through without any more failures. But just to give you an idea on the fleet, so the newest one is a 2018 that's got 30,000 miles on it. The second is a 2014 that's got 97,000 miles on it. The oldest is a 2010 chassis, the cabin and wheels, and the box in the back is 2,000, and that has 104,000 miles on it. So the fleet ages, and those aren't like 104,000 miles on your car. These are hard. The example is key on gas on, and then your foot is halfway to the headlights. So they're hard miles, a lot of idling time. The next one, 5490, maintenance and service agreements. That's to cover a one-year maintenance agreement for two of our stretchers. The state requires that we have somebody maintain them, because the new stretchers we have are electric lift with hydraulics. They're very expensive. I wouldn't want anybody in the department trying to maintain them. We've, we contract with the manufacturer. The new ambulance has a five-year warranty, so that one, we still have two more, three more years that we're not covering on. These stretchers have paid dividends, and I jinked myself at the Finance Committee meeting when we have not had an injury. In the six years that we've had these power cuts, we have not had an injury, and over the weekend, we had a firefighter getting a shoulder injury, but lifting a patient into the stretcher, so it wasn't on the stretcher. And that 5500, ambulance supplies, $17,700. This covers the items that we purchase and throwaway items. Some stuff we get from the hospitals. The only hospital now that does a one-for-one swap is Cooley Dick, and it's a very small amount of equipment. So every year, when I'm given a budget number to live with, and I throw money into that line item, that's probably the most expensive line item in the ambulance. It's, I think it was funded at 12, $13,000 this year. So based on that number, I figure out approximately how many calls we're going to get out of it, and we always exceed that. So call volume has exceeded what was hoped we would get by. Put it in my narrative, we have, we're required to carry thermometers in the ambulance, and they're not like you can buy at CVS. Because they're medical equipment, they have to be certified for mobile use. I don't think there's any difference, but there's a tag that says certified for mobile use. So that thermometer that you can put in your ear or scan, CVS, that's $20 or $290 apiece. All three are the same age, and one of them failed. So my guess, being one of those conspiracy theories, people is that the other two are going to die shortly, so the manufacturer can get more money out of us as well. And that's it for the line items.
Any questions for the chief? Getting up easy, I guess. Anyone from the public?
I'd like to make a motion for the full approval by the full council of the following appropriation: $44,940.60 to be transferred from Free Cash, to be transferred to the following accounts: EMS incentive, $17,000; repairs to vehicles and equipment, $8,000; maintenance and service agreement, $2,240.60; and ambulance medical and surgical supply, $17,700, for the purposes that were hereforementioned by the Fire Chief. Second.
We have a motion and a second for the appropriation of $44,940.60 from Free Cash to various fire accounts. Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes. All right. I think that...
Let's close the public hearing.
Why don't we?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, moving on, we have communications from elected officials. We did get something from the planner. Did you want to speak to that at all, or did you just, we'll just go with it? Now would be good.
I meant after the public.
We like now.
Should we turn off the lights for you, Jeff?
Yeah, that would be great. I'm Jeff Bag. I'm the city planner. I'm going to try to use the technology, as I always try to do.
It's not an election app, is it?
Ooh. Ouch.
I thought we were going to take the other items up first, so just bear with me for one minute.
We like to shake it up. Keep you on your toes.
That's good.
Yeah, that's good. This file cannot be displayed. I was practicing. I think I'll try it without the presentation, but it was really going to be meaningful. It was going to be awesome, and... Could I defer, could I, could I come back in a minute?
Sure.
It's important, because I want to, we were talking about the downtown strategic plan. I'd like to put up the slide that I had prepared easier that way. Okay. I can access it. If you give me a moment, if you want to take up another item, I know there's some other things.
Okay. We'll give you a minute. Moving on, correspond, did anyone have anything, any of the elected officials have anything else from correspondence perspective?
You may want to put the lights on for the cameras.
Oh, you want to get the lights there, Bill? Are you also getting up to speak, Bill, or just get the lights?
President Kniff, oh, sorry, Coniff. Thank you. Just don't forget, to all the people assembled here tonight, don't forget Winterfest this weekend, wonderful celebration, climate change permitting. There will be some ice carving potentially, and the chili competition, as always, at the high school from 11 to 1. And just to put it on your calendars, in May, Rise Against Hunger, which is a great project that's been going on here for a couple of years, is May 9, but I'll announce that again in the future.
We're going to need a reminder.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Correspondents from President and Vice President, I do want to tonight announce the members of the Rank Choice Voting Committee. We have completed assembling that committee, and they will have their first meeting on February 12 at 6:00 PM, I believe, in that conference room right behind us.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I'd like to shake it up. So this committee was formed as a result of the work on the charter and how the Act 2331, an act amending the Homeworld Charter of the City of East Hampton, to create an ad hoc committee to draft a proposed ordinance establishing the ballot format and the procedural rules for casting and counting rank choice voting votes for mayoral position and district city councillors in East Hampton. So we did publicly communicate that, and we got some folks who were interested. And the committee will be comprised of Barbara LaBombar, the city clerk, Barbara Craig from the Board of Register of Voters, Counselor Thomas Peake from District 3, Counselor Owen Zerit, Counselor-at-Large, Chris Korchuk, who is a registered voter in East Hampton, Daniel Gilbert, who is a registered voter in East Hampton, and Sarah Amaroso, who is a registered voter in East Hampton. And I fear that you were talking behind the back. So that committee will be moving forward on February 12. They will have an organizational meeting at that time, and then they will set a regular schedule and cadence for their ongoing meetings. Okay. Counselor, please.
That room is not video, so we definitely asked, I noticed that there is a video camera set up for the school building committee meeting, so you'll have to...
Yeah, counsel, the committee rooms were at a premium, and we wanted to get the organizational meeting off the ground, so it's probably less...
Not important.
Yeah, so, but ongoing, you'll want to keep that in mind to be in one of the conference rooms.
Yeah, yeah, I'd love to just figure out what the situation, just given the potential public interest in it, I think.
I'm going. Your meetings won't be held in there ongoing.
Yeah.
So just to clarify, so there is, is there ability to bring in a recording device for this meeting?
I actually don't know.
Can we contact the...
Counselor, please.
Yes. Media does bring one in for the school building committee, so I imagine they can do that. And I think Dr. Leclair actually is the one that turns it on, so one of you could turn it on. I mean, just have to ask them to bring it in.
Okay. All right. Any other comments? Okay. Are we good?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. Mayor Communications, Mayor LaChapelle?
You don't have to.
That would be you.
Kinda. You can do this part? All right. So I'd like, I'm going to yield my time to city planner Jeff Bag to just do an overall update of what's going on in the city right now and what's coming at us. We're working on some communication tools to do regular updates with the many projects and grants going on. We're not quite there, but we're real close, and I'm going to invite Planner Bag to come up and run it, run it through it.
Thank you. I'm Jeff Bag. I'm the city planner. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for inviting me up. I wanted to take this opportunity to, you know, with the mayor's, in coordination with the mayor, we wanted to try to take this opportunity to give the city council some information before things are happening. And so the first bit of information is with regard to a project at One Ferry Street, which is the private development portion, as well as the public road improvement project, which is obviously adjacent to it on Ferry Street and Pleasant Street. So the project has taken a winter pause. As many of you have noticed, there hasn't been any construction activity in the roadway. That's very normal for this time of year. But what we're, what we're about to see is some work associated with the private development that is going to occur close to the bike path. So we had a meeting this morning, sort of an update on various parts of this project, and the schedule pushed out a little bit. So this is a tiny bit premature. They were initially telling us this could be next week, but it looks like, I tried to amend the information for this presentation, the slide, to reflect our expectation for activities to start again on, on or about February 24. And this portion of the project should run basically through March. So I've got like three images here that we plan to push out for public outreach, but want to preview it here. So the area in particular is highlighted in yellow, and I have a couple other slides, but it's really an area that's close to the bike path. So the next image is a little bit different, just view, so this is on the bike path. You've crossed Ferry Street and are kind of going towards North Hampton. So the patch of trees that are highlighted here will all be removed. And the first thing that we'll see, probably the week of the 24th, the first thing we'll see is, the construction crews will install a construction fence. As you can see in this image, there's a green bike path sign. So the construction fence is going to run just probably three, three feet off the path, and it'll create the barrier for people to understand that it's going to be a construction site to the right. So those trees will be removed, and what will be happening, and this image is a planned view, the area where tree removal will happen is highlighted in yellow. And then just to the right and kind of below it is what will be happening, is the construction of a pretty big retaining wall. And it will come towards the bike path. Retainer will be constructed, and that will create a row of parking that will serve the first building on Ferry Street. It'll also be part of the public parking area. So this is part of one of the easements that the city council approved probably a month ago or two months ago, perhaps. And so this part of the project can occur in winter, so it's off the street. And so we worked pretty diligently to get this part of the project moved up so that the contractor can stay in East Hampton through the winter. So this is important just because I think, as there are a couple other projects in town, tree removal is the, is the thing that people see very quickly. And so we want to try to prepare people for this, and so to do some public outreach. Are there questions about this? The next couple items are related to cannabis. So just as a way of an update, we learned recently that the Cannabis Control Commission will be meeting on tomorrow, February 6. And what we've learned is that, if you can see, this is just a screenshot of the agenda, but on the top right is recommendations for final licenses. And 84 Cottage Street, which is, the verb is herb, is slated to receive their final license. And so we've been technically notified, the planning board had a condition for requesting a 30-day notice prior to opening. And so their arriving on this agenda is a very good sign that they could be opening within the next 30 days. So we didn't exactly talk about this, but there'll be probably several coordination meetings with the police, fire, mayor's office, and probably planning just to understand how their opening will occur. But as a reminder, they're appointment only for the first 60 days. So we should have not a great deal of impact, but we'll be preparing for that regardless. And then so, below that is staff recommendations for provisional licenses. And so this is Holistic Industries, which is 155 North Hampton Street. So it's, that's their company name, but they're going by Liberty. So everyone's kind of been curious about the status of that store. They are in a holding pattern with the planning board, because the planning board needs this provisional license to be granted in order for the planning board to grant the special permit. So we expect that to happen either at the end of February or early March. And then they have some process, but that facility appears to be pretty much built out. So maybe 60 days, you know, would be just a potential target for that store to open. The next update, I believe this is the last one I have.
Jeff, can I, really quickly, since you're on the subject, do we have any updates on some of the other businesses that have, that have been talking about opening in town? Apical, Herbology, what's the status of those?
Generally speaking, the status of both of those two that you mentioned, they have received their provisional license, but neither have taken the step which would, the next step, well, actually, so, let me take one step back. So the Herbology Group is the old Cook Building Supply. So they actually, quite a while ago, achieved their provisional license, and then were granted the special permit for retail and their cultivation facility. But they have taken no steps to, to, you know, apply for building permits or do any other work. So no real update. And then Apical had received their provisional license, but had never actually applied for a special permit for their retail use. So we haven't heard from them in some time.
So in the absence of their applying, anyone applying, does that imply that there's still special permits available for cannabis retail?
Yeah, the rundown is that Holistic Industries, if they get their special permit, which we, I anticipate that they will get it, because they've, they are, they've gone through the process, they're just waiting for this provisional. That'll be the fourth special permit that has been granted. So, so the way it works is there would be two more opportunities for special permits.
Thank you.
And then, just by way of information, on Park Street, there's an image here, but this technology is a little tricky. Maybe it'll pop up. But on Park Street, past the new school, past, past White Brook, going towards the plains, I just wanted to kind of bring to people's attention that there is a solar project that is beginning to, they're beginning to mobilize. And what you see on Park Street is next to, you know, the old Brick Bed and Breakfast Building. So I wanted to just let people know that that is a construction staging area that they're setting up there. The actual solar facility is in the woods. It's all been permitted by the planning board and permitted by Conservation Commission. But what you're seeing out there is going to be a construction staging area. So there will be a lot of activity, but I just wanted to kind of let people know that that's not the actual solar location. We are in communication with the company, and they're finishing up their pre-construction requirements with the Conservation Commission. And as soon as they do that, they'll be eligible for the building permit. We're expecting to start to see heavy equipment there, possibly as early as Monday. And they're going to be mobilizing there and going into the property. There's going to be a lot of tree removal, and there's going to be heavy equipment coming in and out of that section of the property. They will install a construction sort of apron. But that's all anticipated. But I've heard, you know, from people, they're asking, what is that? So this was supposed to show a little image of that, but...
Is that a residential installation? Who's benefiting from the solar array?
The structure is mainly the benefits of the city is going to be through the pilot program, so the payment in lieu of taxes, which maybe the Americans speak to that, but the energy generated is going to go into the grid.
So we are, we are commissioning this?
Excuse me?
Is the city commissioning this?
No, this is a private solar development.
Okay. All right. Got it.
Great. So that's all I have.
Counselor?
Yes.
Planner Bag, I'm just, with that solar project happening, is the, is it safe to say the other solar project that's between Westview Terrace and the bike path is moving at a similar pace? I know that one had gotten delayed because of tree removal that was like illegal. And I'm just wondering if you have an update on that one as well?
The property that you're mentioning is off of South Street, so it's South Street, Westview Terrace. That project is no longer really a project. That project is no longer really a project. So, they...as you said, there was a tree management plan in place, and they may have deviated from that plan. And through that process, the solar company has not pursued it any further. So, the other solar project that may come to fruition in the next, say, four to six months would be the one on Florence Road behind Heritage Farm. And so, that was something that was permitted and was going through the state process. I was going to take one more stab at this because I'm standing here and I really want to see it work.
We have nothing but time.
So, and I know there's other people here who probably have actually items, but...so, the arrow draws a line to the construction staging area, which on the left side is Park Street. So, that...the image was from the other day. So, there's a construction storage unit. Right now, what's out there is the erosion control. And I'm bringing this up because they're going to bring in a lot of stuff. So, they're going to have stacked racks of solar panels. There's going to be equipment, but my purpose for bringing this up is this is a staging area. So, you can see the dark image on the map is the access road, which crosses a wetland, and then the two arrays are in the back. And so, below the solar panels is Holly Circle. So, that was where the planning board held nine public hearings to go through that process, and most of those abutters were very satisfied because there's a significant buffer between their property and the solar, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, did you have anything else you wanted to speak to?
No, I do not.
Thank you.
But don't you?
Okay. Hold on, Mayor. We may have questions. Councillor Riss?
I forgot to talk about the school building committee meeting, which I attended and I intend to attend from now until the building's built, and the mayor can also inform us. If you recall, at the last meeting, they were going to have temporary access to White Brook Middle School through the Treehouse Burton Road. And that has, after a process which the superintendent met with the neighbors, bottom line is they decided that's not a viable solution. So, now they are going to...they've received a little extra cash to build a two-lane road. If you're facing White Brook, the right side, that's now the in driveway, is going to be a two-lane road where In-N-Out will be there, and the other road stays as a construction. So, they're going to widen that to make it that process. That was the...I just wanted to be able to report to the council things that are happening with the school. They have begun to do a great deal of work on the roundabout, and if I'm correct, that's going to be trying to be built this summer and be ready to go in September. That's what they said at the meeting, am I correct, Mayor?
That's the schedule right now. I mean, the weather and whatnot, the...using the one driveway and widening it a bit also is something that was very desirable to the superintendent because she felt if she could keep, you know, the staff, if the school department staff could keep their eyes on buses and cars and kids walking, the longer the better. And there will be a fenced-off area where pedestrians and cyclists can go to and from the school that is separate from where vehicles will be going up and down and quite some distance away from construction traffic.
Anyone else have any questions?
Oh, so I would just also want to clarify that we do not have, nor did we find, extra cash to do this.
Oh, I didn't mean to. I'm sorry.
It is coming out of the construction contingency, which is a very small type pot of money for things just like this. And we feel actually this final solution for the traffic actually is much more cost-effective than using Button Road with signs and police details and whatnot, but...
I will be careful in the future not to describe such appropriations.
No extra cash, no cash is free. That's what we're...
Councillor Zerrit? Mayor?
What was it about the access through Button Road that was deemed nonviable? I'm just curious.
There was concerns...well, there were a couple of concerns, but the one that really turned the tide were the neighbors on Button Road were concerned about vehicles using the road. It's very narrow when you come down the hill, and then disruption on their street. While the option was safe and viable for me, I'm very happy with where we ended up because I remember being on the zoning board when we approved Treehouse, and that emergency access is not built as a true bridge or overpass. And I was a little concerned about us using it for two and a half years and what the condition would be at the end. The engineers said it would be fine, but, you know, a lot of attention on culverts and stormwater and drainages and whatnot. So, I'm...that was...there were a whole bunch of smaller concerns, but then the neighbors, you know, really to mitigate the neighbors' concerns, just the cost rose. And Fontaine Brothers went back to the drawing board and worked with our superintendent and our architect to come up with the solution we have now.
That access is...that's temporary, or is that a temporary access that's going to be incorporated into permanent, a permanent road into the school?
It will...it won't exactly be that road. I mean, there'll be one road that's coming down off of the roundabout. We're trying to use existing infrastructure as long and as much as we can before we go to something unknown.
Councillor Lynch?
How much is out of the contingency budget or whatever that is this going to pull from, you know? So, we have money set aside for any over expenditures, and that's one of these. What does that bring our balance to, I guess, on that?
The cost of the solution is $37,500 or so, and it brings the...I'm not sure where the contingency balance...I mean, you start the project, and I think we had a 12% constant...yeah, constant, I can't even say it all together. 12%, and that gets smaller as the project goes on because you start spending, you figure out what you're going to use for, you know, materials or not. But what that contingency amount is now, I don't know.
Councillor Gomez?
Thank you, President Gomez. You mentioned, Councillor Riss mentioned that instead of one-way, it's going to be two-way and the right side going down, right? But it's a few kids going in bike to the school.
Yes.
So, is any...they're going to be any special line for the kids that are going bike that is going to be safe for them?
Yes. It fences off from the road. So, there's the road, the entrance and the access, and then onto the side fenced off will be cycling and pedestrian access. That will not be great. Yeah.
Anything else? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Sorry, you're killing me. Sorry.
I have a question about the solar farm.
Is that fair? All right.
So, for you, Jeff. I was just curious, I just understand the solar farm's better, and it's a private farm. How does it or does it benefit the city in any way, just in terms of talking to constituents? Or is it just a private group making money and we get no benefit from it?
Well, the world is better off.
The world is better off.
I'm not being sarcastic. That's not...I'm not being sarcastic.
No, you're right.
I'm serious.
It's feeding more solar to the grid versus...
And we get a pilot agreement from the use of the land as well as a decommissioning bond at the end. So, in saying 20 years, you know, if, you know, we're making energy out of the air, then they will have to take down the array and return the land. It doesn't become a skeleton of a solar park, but it's a private development.
All right, thank you.
And it's on private land, right?
Councillor Zerrit?
Yes. And also, just to remind the body here, Planner Bag, we were able to obtain an easement at the end of that solar array, which will be really valuable going forward for a potential trail project. So, that actually, we made good use of that deal, I think.
I was just going to say, and I believe that trails are incorporated into the project that are going to go around it, correct? Some improved...
No, on that project, there are none. I think as Councillor Zerrit mentioned, we tried pretty hard to get the access agreement through. It connects to the bottom of the Treehouse parcel, and then there's a series of protected open space parcels all the way to Plain Street. So, that has been sort of a vision for quite some time, and that access was one of the two last remaining private parcels to cross. So, there might have been another version. The Westview Terrace one was a discussion piece of trying to get something around the array for educational purposes, but that, like I said before, that project didn't move forward, so.
Who is the owner of the land that we will be eventually hiring?
So, the owner of that parcel is the Gall family.
Okay.
And then, it's a negotiation agreement that the city enters into with the solar company. It's payment in lieu of taxes. So, they're described as being difficult to assess the value. So, there's a predetermined value at the beginning, and then the city gets that guaranteed payment every year for 20 years.
Do you know what that is?
I do not recall the number off the top of my head.
I do not recall them.
But it's more...
Might you get us that number?
I think we...
Absolutely.
It's more than the assessed value now, because the assessed value now is vacant land does not provide the city any tax revenue. So, that would be one potential benefit.
Yay.
And not to belabor it, I think it's important to know that right now, the way the zoning is set up is that it's a special permit in any district for these large-scale solar companies to come forward and find a site. And what we did find was that the state's SMART program had some unintended consequences where the solar companies sought green vacant sites, which was actually not the intent of the state's SMART program. They were intending to incentivize brownfields, parking lots, and things like that, but there was a pretty glaring loophole, and I think we're pretty lucky. We have two large-scale solar facilities that are permitted under the SMART program, but some other communities in the Pioneer Valley got hit way harder with, you know, 50 acres of forest being cut to provide solar. So...
Wow.
It's a thing that you may hear about in the sort of next year or so because they were supposed to recalibrate that state program.
Thank you. Councillor Fiddey?
Just a question for the mayor, back to the driveway going to the school. I just wanted to be sure I heard the numbers correctly. And you were saying that the driveway would have to be expanded going down to White Brook from Park Street. And I thought you had said that that would be done for $37,500.
Yeah, it's not like a brand-new, it's not paving. They're using a hard pack. I mean, I would defer to the committee and to those plans, but the cost is $37,000. So, don't envision a new park, multi-use path.
A new driveway, yeah, okay.
Yeah, no, it is very much, I mean, a construction site. I mean, it's safe, but we're building a school. Yeah, not new.
Okay, that sounds...and the cost to go down Button Road was how much? I don't think you...
When you add in the signage, when you add in the extra routes, the timing of the buses, the police details, it was even hard to calculate it.
And we don't have police...there won't be any police details at the existing driveway?
There'll be some.
So, there will be police details.
Not like on Button Road.
There would have been extra police details.
Yes.
Good.
Yeah, a lot. And that's on us. That's out of our school budget.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I will get the pilot agreement as well. The 1133, which is the updated school budget, that will have the contingency amounts and what those contingency amounts are based on, whether that's...it's not the whole bonding amount, but the construction budget.
Okay.
I'll get those electronically to Barbara for the council.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, we will now move on to the reports of the committees, and we'll start with finance, Councillor Riss.
Thank you.
Is Planner Bag ready? It looks like he's got the strategic plan up.
I figured it out, but I...
Okay. Bring it on.
Sergeant?
Thank you.
So, I'm Jeff Bag, the city planner, back still. I am very pleased to be here to kind of give a preview of the downtown strategic plan. This is a draft, and my two goals for this evening were to make sure that you are aware that this is done. But we want to launch a two-week public comment period. And so, we want to try to get the word out that this is in draft form. It's going to be posted on the project's website, which is plandowntown-easthampton.com. And there is an online opportunity to submit comments, and there's three basic questions, and I'll get to that in a minute. But we do not have the consultant on board forever, so it's really important for key boards and committees to look at this. There are small things that need to be adjusted, but what we're really trying to figure out is big-picture things. Did something get missed? Is something just really not clear? And then, we want to be able to make the document final and then begin aggressively to pursue the action steps. So, the document again is online at plandowntown-easthampton. And what I wanted to just say is that the overall purpose of the plan is to coordinate, gather, and synthesize a wide range of community input into a cohesive, innovative, strategic plan for the downtown area's economic growth, sustainability, and future needs. So, this is the culmination of a year's worth of work by the Harriman Group, who are out of Boston but spent a lot of time in East Hampton. And through that time, they have been very...they've been very happy and impressed with the turnout. So, over the course of the year, we had three public meetings that were very well-attended, and this is the result. So, it's...the report itself is very in-depth and has a lot of parts, but what I want to cover is sort of the key components. So, it covers economic development, shared parking. We're looking at municipal assets. So, in particular, this study really drills down on the three elementary school properties. They're all situated in the Smart Growth Overlay District. So, there's a review of that because there will be some minor tweaks that we will want to pursue in the next year or two to make sure that the zoning is as good as it can be for the school properties. General revitalization, it does cover the entire downtown area, so it covers Main Street, Union Street, and Cottage Street. And throughout the report, they acknowledge that the Mill District is in close proximity. Technically, they didn't include it in the report, but throughout, you'll be able to read that the bike path, basically from Union Street to the Mills, is a key connector piece for us to be exploring and enhancing in the future. So, they do touch on that. These are what you would call word clouds, but this is just a summary of the community feedback. It goes over strengths and opportunities, weaknesses and threats. And so, it's a very common sort of planning activity to do. And I don't think the findings are surprising for people who are familiar with the downtown, so I won't go over them now, but I would encourage everyone to be taking a chance to review the document. The two main components that are going to hopefully, well, not hopefully, they will form the foundation of us moving forward is the chapter on the school reuse analysis. So, what I've just described here, and just...these are just, you know, images cut from the report, but the school property reuse analysis is presented to understand the potential of the different school properties for community-desired uses after the current school uses are consolidated in the new building. And what the report does is provide, you know, baseline information about the site and the buildings. And this will become part of the next step moving forward, which is a committee who will put together requests for proposals. And this is a sort of a process that they outline in this report. We, through the community outreach meetings, you know, there are clear identified uses that are desirable, and it'll be through the next year or two where they have to be prioritized. And then, the RFP can be written to ask for those uses to be the top priorities coming forward. Really, an important component of the report is giving the committee some tools to move forward with. So, on the right on the screen here are criteria, and I know that they're not really legible for people on the screen, but... for people on the screen, but some of the groupings are, for example, community benefits. So two years from now, when we're reviewing proposals coming in, the intent is to use these criteria or something very close to this to help us rank any proposals coming in. So under community, they're broken into broader categories. This one shows community benefits. So the examples of things that we can ask for are intergenerational uses, like provides direct civic benefit through its function or activities for East Hampton residents of all ages. So this is going to be the exercise that this reuse committee will have to go through and set these parameters. But the consultant, you know, captured the community input and gave us the documents to move forward with. So other community benefits are things that provide benefits to seniors, arts and cultures, young residents. This one E is payment for onsite or offsite improvements. So we could form this so that for Maple Street, for example, that the sidewalk in front of the property is improved as part of the project. So we could rank certain things. And then enhanced tax revenue was a big topic through the community meetings. So, you know, for some of the buildings, if not all of them, we want them to go on the tax rolls. And so from my perspective and moving this forward, it's truly unique for us as a city to have three of these properties. So the disposition of a school in this day and age is not necessarily uncommon, but to have three is a really unique opportunity because there could be a way to satisfy multiple needs, whereas a community who has just one school is going to have all the competing needs for one site. It's going to make it way more challenging. In this case, we have three. So the consultants do sort of show a path for each of the school properties that may be desirable, but it is, this is the foundation for a committee to then take this further. So this doesn't solve all the questions as what is Maple Street going to be? This report does not show that, but it says, here's the potential desired uses that we heard. I'm very close to being done, but I think what this is a very busy graphic, but it's another way to see that chart. So on the right is community benefits, financial considerations, architectural design, circulation, access, and parking compatibility, sustainable development, business use, and then the form of disposition. And then the information on the left is, are the elements that feed that. So this is to prepare us for a fairly elaborate process moving forward, and it's really intended to give the reuse committee the place to start from, because otherwise we'd be starting from scratch, and so we're not, which is highly desirable. In general, where we are at is on the top, this study. So it's really, there's more in the study than just the schools. So there is some parking inventory. So we have a more factual-based counts on our on-street and off-street parking. And then there's a lot of discussion about the concept of shared parking. So what the consultants see, and if you don't know it, you are experiencing it certain places when you go into town and you park one place and you walk to multiple places, that is in essence, shared parking. So you can park once and go to multiple places at once. So that's a key thing that we have already happening and there are ways to formalize that. And so in particular, you'll see that there's a specific discussion about Old Town Hall and the East Hampton Savings Bank parking lot. So we want to form the basis for those, that concept and those talks to move forward. Instead of talking about building new parking for Old Town Hall, there is a way to share it. And that's really important for Main Street. So the formation of the school building reuse committee, development of requests for proposals, and then the school building disposition process, and then the last step is disposition, redevelopment, and reuse. So we have a fairly short timeline when we actually run this out. The consultants at their, one of their last meetings really encouraged the city to not stop the process and just keep it going. Because what they see is there is a technical process to take the property from the school committee and give it to the city in general. So it's a technical process, so we'll have to identify where in the timeline that occurs. But we could be doing work and potentially have the RFP either formulated or potentially even out before that process occurs. There's a lot of things to do from here. The consultants were well-aware of the Union Street tip. They acknowledged the Cottage Street improvements that were just completed. They see zoning updates as a step that we will need to pursue to kind of, the big thing is that the Pepin School Building is not in the 40R District. So it's this expansion of that 40R over that building is one of the key things. Short and long-term parking improvements. They recommend transportation studies for Main Street, which is not the only time this has been raised, but that may be the next area of focus is Main Street's really wide. And there are a lot of things you can do when you actually have a wide right-of-way to change the dynamics, and so they are recommending that. Before I take some questions, the short-term parking is actually something that we've already started. You've all hopefully seen the banners outside 50-Pace and that's a very modest thing to do. And then we have small A-frame signs that we're just trying to direct people down to the slot. We've talked that one of the things that we would like to try to pursue sometime before this summer is to try to activate the teacher parking lot next to Maple Street. So if you're actually on Maple Street, there's approximately 25 parking spaces that exists. And the idea is that there's a way, and it's not that complicated, to open them up after 5:00 and put up a couple of signs, maybe enhance some of the lighting. But that is something that is very tangible and is a small step that we can do in the meantime. So the mayor and I have been talking about that and there's a potential process for that. So the last thing, were you going to speak to that?
I was just going to speak to parking.
Okay.
So I've started that conversation about the parking spaces at Maple Street School with Superintendent Leclerc, and we'll be working on that. Signage and lighting are the big parts of just, it starts at 5:00 and on the weekends it's fine. And if there's a school event, having proper signage. I do think small adjustments in parking behaviors, this is a great place to start. I think this first part with the sign, the flags, and the A-frame arrows pointing down as well as Planner Bag working with the Cottage Street Business Association. They put on their website and their Facebook page, you can park at 50-Pace and there is a big lot, it's only X amount, like, and directing, and the restaurants have done that well. And that outreach to those businesses would do the same thing to those 25 spots. And as it gets nicer, we're trying to put that into. So I'm in the midst of writing a small proposal and we'll bring it forward to the school committee first and then to this body, just to put it out as an option. But Superintendent is in agreement. We've come to terms, I just need to put it straight.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I realize that you may have questions. The last slide is intended to just show a couple of the action items. So there's a lot in the report that forms this. This is the place to go. If you want to see where we're heading, this is the place to go. It's the last chapter, it's the action steps. The school building analysis is another really important chapter, but they're all important. So it all feeds these couple, I mean, not couple, a couple pages of action items. But the key ones are going to be, you know, outlined for the school building reuse. So the change of zoning for the school properties, initiate the formation of a school reuse committee, develop the RFPs, and then research and encourage formation of community land trusts as potential nonprofits, nonprofit lesses of the school properties. So these are just kind of the examples of where this goes. There's a whole section on parking. And then, last but not least, is the idea to encourage public input. So the three big questions that we're trying to pose is are there any potential school uses, strategies, or actions that were missed or underrepresented? Are there any elements of the downtown strategies or actions that are missed or underrepresented in the report? So again, this is broad, so it covers Main Street, Union Street, and Cottage Street and the school. So it's very comprehensive. And then do you have any other comments, questions, or concerns for the planning team? So, you know, again, there are small edits that need to happen, some misspelled names, things like the city council, the full list of city councils not there for some reason, so those are minor. It's really trying to capture the big picture. So that concludes my brief presentation.
How are you going, so under what scenario are you going to do, like, public meetings to solicit those last three questions?
No.
It's online.
It's online.
Right, no, I got that.
We talked about printing a copy and putting it at the library and there would be a copy at the City Clerk's office.
How are people going to know it's at the library?
We, this is a pretty consistent theme of how do we get information out? So we'll use a press release. Maybe we could do a mayor's update that has been pretty successful. We have Facebook, which is a tool. It's not the best tool, but that's what we have currently. And that's, this is the thing, is, you know, it's surprising to me that sometimes people just still don't know that anything's happening and that's, I don't know how to overcome that, so this is the best we can do. We asked the consultant for a little extra to give us this two-week period. We don't necessarily have to do that, we could just have this final, but we want to try to offer the opportunity.
I saw Councilor Ross. Or just a copy of the Council on Aging as well? Good.
I think we can do that. Yep.
Okay. Councilor Durbin?
And the two-week window is now?
We'd like to start it essentially now. We, I spoke with the mayor and we really want to give the presentation to the council first, so possibly starting on Monday. I think there is a date lodged in here, though. So we'd like to start aggressively as early as tomorrow to just share some information about this.
Yeah, I mean, that's why I'm asking, it'd be helpful to let residents know exactly what, when this starts and when it stops.
Then let's say it starts now and we'll continue for two weeks.
Councilor Durbin?
And is the planning department going to put out an announcement on Facebook that individual councilors get to share?
Yes, I would like to do that tomorrow.
Okay, good, thanks.
Anything else, sir?
Nothing else.
Any comments, questions?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
I would just, around communication, over and over again. So this plan is actually up on our website and I've been sharing out the link and it's been up for a while. So, I mean, to grab the link and push that out, but we'll do it as well and do a press release. But it's a little clunky to access, but the planning department does a really good job of getting all of our grant applications and what's going on in the city, at least a one-page or PDF of what's going on. So that's a good page to star on your book bar.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we will move on to committee reports. Councilor Rist.
Thank you. At our last meeting, we discussed a number of items, including the Cannabis Impact Stabilization Fund and the creation of a tax rate stabilization fund. I want to applaud the mayor for adding these to stabilization. We had a lot of discussion, we will continue them at our next meeting. We cannot promise what we can do for tax rate stabilization, but we can say that we're trying. We're trying very hard for fiscal year '21 and especially the future as funding comes in from cannabis and other sources, we are looking at it. Our next meeting will be the 12th at 5:30. And all of our meetings moving forward will be Wednesday, the 2nd and 4th Wednesdays of the month, so we can be consistent. I have to ask Councilor Lynch, are you okay for the 12:30 meeting, I mean, the meeting on the 12th? You are okay, because Councilor Coniff is unable to make it. I have a few items which I'd like to read and move to Finance Committee. First is I'd like to move the city council's proposed budget to the Finance Committee for review. Second.
Motion for moving the budget to Finance, motion is second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye. The next is a number of first readings for appropriations and transfers. The first is the amount requested is $93,869.20 to be transferred from free cash, to be transferred to, Councilor Derby's going to love this, Police Hybrid Cruisers account, $93,869.20 for the purchase of one 2020 Ford Escape Special Edition Unmarked Cruiser for the Detective Bureau, $30,623.00, and purchase of one 2020 Ford Police Interceptor Utility KA8A Mark Cruiser, $63,246.20. The next item is, I'm going to find it. Wait, no, I'm going to read them all first, I'm sorry. The next item is $9,600 to be transferred from the Reserve Fund, to be transferred to election and regular and other positions, $9,000. Election and regular computer services, $600. To pay for election worker and computer programming costs for the March 31st, 2020 special election to fill the Senator and General Court vacancy. The next item is, I thought it's one, $391,800 is requested to be transferred from retained earnings, $120,000, and Capital Stabilization Fund, $271,800, to be transferred to the Union Street Capital Project, two accounts, one for $271,800 and one for $120,000. The amount requested be used for the following purpose, complete the design of the Union Street corridor and provide for construction oversight. And the last one is, I read the wrong one before, so I'm going to read this. This is an end-department transfer for $93,626.93 to be transferred from the Reserve Fund account, to be transferred to four police department accounts, I believe, yes, $11,000, $22,508.71, and $60,118.22 to cover the shortfall in Police FY '20 budget due to unforeseen expenses, the retirement resignation of four officers, and a result, sending two new officers to the Police Academy. I move that these four items be sent to the Finance Committee for review.
Second.
Motion, second, to move a couple of interdepartmental transfers, supplemental appropriations to Finance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, any discussion? Motion passes.
Lastly, I'd like to set public hearings for our next meeting in these chambers. First, for the establishment of a Cannabis Impact Fee Stabilization Fund, and secondly, for a Tax Rate Stabilization Fund, and lastly, for the $81,069 to fund the pay and step increases for Pay Plan employees. That wasn't the last one, I apologize. And the last one will be the $9,600 to fund the special state election for Senate vacancy. Those four items to be set for public hearing.
Second.
Motion, second, to move some financial issues to public hearing as mentioned by Councilor Rist. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
That concludes.
Thank you. Public safety, Councilor Gomez.
Thank you, President Coniff. I want to start with, I want to say thank you for being here so long. That's why I want to start with the asset of the Division Street extension. I just want to say that we received all the documentation from the city planner, the planning board, from DPW Director, and we got the updated deed, and we have the city solicitor review all the documentation and everything is good, good to go. We vote, and our last meeting, 3-2-0 in favor of it, because we have all the documentation. We have the city planner give back here if we have any question about it, and we have the attorney, Amanda. Yeah, I just want to, I don't wish it was Amanda. Here, if anyone have a question to her, but everything is good to go.
Anyone have any question? Councilor Rist?
So this has been reviewed by all pertinent agencies, the city engineer, the DPW, planner...
Yes, we have all the documentation.
The city attorney on the deed and all that stuff.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Any question for Amanda?
She may be so late.
We should ask her something.
Oh, no. Hairline.
That's okay.
What do you feel about all this?
Make something up.
If not, I'm ready to.
Thank you for coming.
I move that pursuant to the application provision of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41 and 82, the city of East Hampton approved the layout and deed of the new public way to be known as Division Street Extension.
Second.
Motion, second, to accept the Division Street extension, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, so Amanda Zedonis Kemp, I'm an attorney here in town, we actually need a second vote for the release of easement. There were three documents, there's the deed, there's the easement for the turnaround, because now the hammerhead turnaround has been pushed down because of the extension of the street, and so there's gonna be a release of the previous hammerhead turnaround, and so the city solicitor said that we need a second vote, because you have to authorize the mayor to sign the release of easement.
Okay.
You do, you, well, you have the document, it was one of the documents that I provided.
Councillor Rist?
Does the motion, can the motion be simply that we move to release the easement?
Yes, and to, to allow the mayor to sign it on behalf.
I made a motion to release easement.
Okay.
I'd like to amend it to release the easement, to have the mayor be authorized to release the easement, I think we wanted to say.
Okay. Second on that motion.
Motion to release the easement, and have the mayor authorize that, any commentary, questions?
This does not need to get, we do not need to discuss this in committee? No, we do not need to introduce this new business?
It's been.
We've been discussing it.
Okay.
And that was, the only question I had, and that was approved by the, our city solicitor.
Yes, yes. Yes, by vacant emerson, yes. It was that, they were the ones that said we needed two votes.
To do the release.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes. Marian, do you think you will need some wording on that? Something a little more clear?
I'll check with Barbara.
Okay. We may wanna write something up for Marian.
It's in the package.
Is it in there?
Yeah, the acceptance of the easement.
And the, and the.
The release of the other easement.
The release of the other one.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. Like I said, we met last night, I just wanna start with that, so Amanda can go home. We vote last night to remove a few things from our agenda, and I will explain why. The first one is the proposal of outdoor events policy. We received that proposal from councillor Sarat and myself, and after reviewing that proposal, we found that it is a little bit too long, and it's, it's a language there that is, could be confusing, and we preferred just to remove it and work with something simpler and fair for everybody in, in our community, so that's the reason we decided to remove it. I will make a motion to, to remove the proposal outdoor events policy without prejudice.
Second.
Okay, motion to remove proposed outdoor events policy without prejudice from the public safety agenda, any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
The second one, that we decide to do the same thing with the quadruple cycle restriction proposal, as we have a conversation with councillor Derby, the ordinance committee, they're gonna do the same thing with the other, the other ordinance, they're similar to this one. We don't see any reason to move forward in this proposal, so that's what the committee decided just to remove all two. I will make a motion to remove the quadruple cycle restriction proposal without prejudice.
Second.
Motion, second, to remove the quadruple cycle restriction proposal without prejudice from the public safety agenda, all those, any conversation? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
And about the pedestrian safety review and residents' spitting concerns, we received finally a letter from DPW, from BPW. They give us some recommendation, one of the recommendations is create another committee, so that this committee could be in charge of what could be the best solutions for, for our city. They give us some guidance, and we're gonna work on it to, to, to bring what is gonna be the functions of that committee in, in, in our, in our city, and we're still working on it, we're gonna bring it to the next, probably gonna bring it to the next meeting, so that way the mayor can appoint those members.
You're gonna make it in a mayoral committee?
It will be, yeah.
Okay.
It will be. Well, we, as a committee, we're gonna bring out later, and the recommendation of the committee, and the recommendation of BPW, all the recommendations, so that way we already have the information in front of you, so we can make a decision.
Okay.
Our next meeting is gonna be March 3rd at 6:00 PM, rule number one, and that's concluded.
Thank you, councillor Gomez. Appointments, is it, okay, I, so it's you for appointments, ongoing?
Yeah, when I'm here.
Councillor Lynch?
Yes, I wasn't here last week.
Missed that completely, I apologize.
You missed me last week?
I missed you last week.
All right, so appointments. We met today, and we had reviewed a few appointments, we had some guests as well in the, the subcommittee, so I'll go through. The first one was Joe McCoy, who's going, was appointed to the East Hampton Housing Authority, and questioned him around why he would like to be on that. He's available to go to all the meetings, there was, he learned a lot of their process and everything else, and thinks he can bring a lot to the table with his experience on the council. He, he feels this side of the city, you know, needs to be represented as well in, in that side of the city with, with the residents, and making sure that there's that collaboration. He, he talked about some of the budget things, they meet once a month, which is fully on his board, he doesn't have any, any other committees in his agenda right now, and we as a committee voted 3 to 0 to recommend Joe McCoy, so I would like to make a motion to approve Joe McCoy to the East Hampton Housing Authority, term expiration 12/31/2024.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to approve Joe McCoy to the housing authority, any comments? Councillor Zerrit?
This name sounds familiar, do you have any information you can forward me, I'll take your word for it.
Yeah, yeah, I'll forward you anything I have.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Okay, the next one is Austin Sanders. He is going to be on the planning board. There was a question, because he checked off the box around not sitting on any other city board or committee, and he currently is on the Board of Public Works, so we wanted to clear the air on that one. He has a background in urban planning, he has a master's degree, three years in mill redevelopment experience. We asked some of his experienced cities that he's worked with in the area, Chickapi, Hoyoke, Ludlow, he's been project manager on different projects as well. He really has a passion for the mill redevelopment, he thinks East Hampton's doing an exceptional job on that, and he wanted to be a part of it and bring his expertise to it, and he wants to put the additional focus on housing and commercial properties as well, and he's already attended four of the meetings, you know, without being on the, the planning board. So we voted 3 to 0 to recommend Austin Sanders to the planning board, so I will make a motion to approve Austin Sanders to the planning board with a term expiration of 12/31/2020.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve Austin Sanders to the planning board, any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
The next one is Brenda Saylor. She is also going for the planning board, and we did not, she did not make the meeting tonight, but she sent us a detailed resume, and really, some real good management, communication departments, and, and stuff within Harvard University. She is, was a VP of State Street Corporation on their marketing side, responsible for a $4.5 million budget, and then also was the founder and CEO of the Veterinary Emergency and Specialty Hospital in South Deerfield. So she developed an entire business, the successful and everything else, worked on getting the loans and, and managed all aspects of, of the business, so we felt she was more than qualified for the planning board, we thought she brought a lot of experience from a financial background, the Harvard background, and running a business, you know, that she can bring a lot to the table in our planning board. So we voted 3 to 0 to approve her, so I will make a motion to approve Brenda Saylor to the planning board with a term expiration of 12/31/2022.
Second.
Motion, and a second, to approve Brenda Saylor to the planning board, any questions? Councillor Zerrit?
Just to clarify, so was there a pre-existing vacancy, or is someone stepping down from the planning board?
I would defer to the mayor, I'm not sure about that.
Was, was someone stepping off the planning board, or there was already a vacancy?
Where's the planner when you need him? There was a vacancy, and then someone stepped down early, and that's why one of the terms ends in 2020. And then the second, isn't one of those appointments an associate?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we hadn't had the associate. And I forget who stepped down.
Austin was the associate one.
Yeah, and then Brenda's filling out the, the actual term until the end of 2020.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
All right, there was another mayoral appointment from last meeting, Jason Miranda to the telecom advisory committee. We received zero information on him, I had zero contact information, so we are continuing that with the request that we, we have any information given, you know, for, for the appointment. So that's continued, and we'll.
I can, I can speak to that situation a little bit, if you'd like. I guess. Jason is a member of the committee, and actually the vice chair of the committee. He, there was a paperwork communication issue that led to his term lapsing, so this was just to get him back on.
Do you think if you have his contact information, can you forward that to that committee?
Absolutely.
And then they can just cross the Ts and dots the Is?
Okay, sure.
That be all, Chris?
Yeah, I'm fine with it, I, I've requested information on, on folks, and we just, there's not even a email address or anything available, so can't contact people without the information. And so that's it for old agenda, we have, looks like four that I need to move over to the subcommittee, or now committee, I apologize. Eileen Myers, Charity Funds Committee, with a term expiration of 12/31. I would like to make a motion to move the following appointments to the appointment committee. Eileen Myers, Charity Fund Committee, 12/31/2022 expiration, Gail Cannon, Charity Funds Committee, 12/31/2022 expiration, Lindsay Altkeern, Zoning Board of Appeals, 12/31/2022, and the reappointment of Samantha Plisca to Main Street Cemetery, 12/31/2022.
Second.
Motion, second, for the aforementioned mayoral appointment nominees, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
I would just, we can look at, but Samantha Plisca to Main Street Cemetery?
Not a reappointment?
It's not a reappointment.
Okay, I apologize, I thought I saw it on the thing.
I was, right, it was the applica, I, I didn't see it as a reappointment.
My bad.
Okay.
So, can I amend that motion?
Yeah, so everybody who said aye, do you relinquish your ayes?
Sure. It's not a reappointment on Samantha Plisca, so I would make the motion on Samantha Plisca to Main Street Cemetery, 12/31/2022.
Second.
Motion, a second, for these appointments, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next meeting.
Is that it?
Next meeting will be on 5/19, in the basement, room A, at 5:30 PM.
Would that be 2/19?
I'm sorry, yes.
5/19?
We skipped a May.
Okay, great, thank you very much. And now, ordinance councillor Derby.
Thank you, hopefully my voice holds up for this. So, last time I spoken about potentially removing the continued review of adult-use cannabis, after speaking with the planner, Jeff Bagg, I've decided that actually, he asked me to keep it on the agenda. So, in the form of a motion, I'd like to request an extension of 90 days on that agenda item.
Motion, second, to extend adult-use cannabis establishment date for 90 days, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Thank you, and our next meeting will be next Tuesday, the 11th, at 6:00 PM, room one.
Thank you.
That concludes.
Property. Councillor Zerrit?
Thank you, President Coniff, property committee met recently, was that last week?
Yeah.
Thank you. The, of the two, of our two agenda items, we did not discuss the request to inventory city-owned property, that's gonna be continued to another meeting, although I'll just make a motion now, as I understand, there was a 30-day extension last time, I'll make a motion now to give a 90-day extension to the request of inventory city-owned property.
Second.
Motion, a second, to extend the inventory city-owned property 90 days, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We had a well-reasably-attended meeting regarding ongoing discussion of building of a municipal dog park, pursuing, at this point, a design grant from the Stanton Foundation. Without speaking at length, when we entered into this process, we identified essentially seven sites, although two were added on as examples in Non-Tuck Park, just to be clear for the record, Non-Tuck Park was never really a viable site, that was per discussions with Director Mason and, and members of that commission, they were included for a purpose of public discussion, but were never really there as potential areas for a variety of reasons, and Director Mason has entered in a letter into the record to explain why, and that was discussed at, at the last meeting, I can forward that to the president, and then therefore to the council, that'd be helpful. And so, a, we had a feasibility study that was performed by the Berkshire Design Group, which offered a variety of sites, I don't need to enumerate them, but after publicing input from a meeting on November 21st, and through a variety of public input and internal discussion within the committee, the, the sites were, so the sites were eliminated, and we settled currently on a site on Oliver Street, which coincidentally was also rated the highest in regards to the review criteria provided by Berkshire Design Group, and I believe there was some public commentary on that earlier. The property subcommittee voted 3 to 0 to forward that proposed site on Oliver Street, and to set a public hearing on March, forgive me, March 18th, here, in these chambers, regarding the ongoing discussion about that site, to gain council approval, to then send a request to the mayor, to forward a request to the planner to apply for that grant. So, at this time, do I need to make a motion to set a public hearing? I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing on March 18th for ongoing discussion about the proposed Oliver Street site in regards to application for a standard design grant and a request of thereof by the mayor, to the mayor, to the mayor.
Second.
Motion, a second, any questions? Councillor Rist?
That is a council meeting, am I not correct?
Correct.
The 18th?
Yes.
I'm wondering, I guess that would be appropriate, and your goal then is to have the council, after that meeting, decide whether to move forward with the dog park? Would that be the goal of that, at the end of that public hearing, that you'll make a motion, which we will decide whether we wanna continue to do this?
The point, the, the goal would be to have the council vote on this specific site on Oliver Street as the proposed site for a request for, to move forward with the design grant application.
And, and one of your, one of the concerns I heard was that you wanna make sure the public is well-represented, because we don't wanna move forward if they're not gonna use the park, and I think that's a legitimate concern, so I'm hoping we can get the word out, so that the friends of the dog park, and anybody involved, come to the meeting, because I believe that is a legitimate concern, and I also recommend that our parks director be here, so that if there's questions. And I also recommend that our Parks Director be here, so that if there's questions, why not Nantucket, he could address them.
Also, do we want to commit to voting for that on three eighteen? I mean, are we going to, are we going to be open to continue the public hearing if things look a certain way?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I don't want to commit to voting on it necessarily?
Oh, just, just public hearing, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and I think, so, just for info, also, the property committee will be meeting on February twenty-seventh, that's a Thursday, at six PM.
Hold on, we haven't finished the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Motion a second on the table to have a public hearing for the dog park. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes. Okay.
Sorry, I got ahead of myself.
No worries.
Well, although that was part of explaining also, so we will be meeting again the twenty-seventh at six PM, a place to, to be determined. And there will also, I will also make an attempt in the meantime to offer some form of info session on this as well. I think there's, this is a process, it's been about eighteen months in the making, and I think it's becoming more and more in the forefront in people's awareness, and there's some opinions and potential misconceptions and conceptions, and so I'd like to, I'll do my part to try to make sure the public is fully informed about the process thus far, and certainly of the next property meeting as well. And if any counselors require any of the information that's been provided so far, such as the Berkshire Design Group study, just please feel free to email me, or I can just, I'll just email it to the president. And that concludes.
All right, thank you. Rules and government relations, I know you have something that you can speak to tonight.
Thank you, Madam President. We have not met yet this term, but we're going to on Monday, the seventeenth, at five PM, that's President's Day, so hopefully, you know, people want to attend, it won't be too difficult. So we're going to be discussing three things at that meeting, or we'll try and discuss three of them, we'll see how many we get to. One is the, the item that Superintendent Leclerc submitted to us, as far as a memorandum of understanding regarding foster students who are in the foster system. We also have two new rules which are being added, one which, or, yeah, which are being, one was submitted by President Coniff and one by myself. President Coniff, would you like to speak to yours?
Sure. Mine is really around the timely creation and posting of minutes of our committee meetings. We have, for the last few years, been a little bit lax in getting that in a timely manner. The Attorney General has recommended that, from an open-meeting perspective, that meetings be posted within three additional meetings, or thirty days, whichever is longer. I still think that's too long, so my proposal is for twenty-one days. I also want to mention that part of the open-meeting rule that we may not all be aware of is that anyone can ask for the minutes within ten days of a meeting, whether they're in draft form and whether they're approved or not. So we need to be more consistent about getting our documented meetings minutes done. So that is what my rule is all about, creating a little more consistency and speed.
Well, I will move that we move this new council rule eleven L to the Rules and Government Relations Committee.
Second.
Motion a second to move a potential new council rule on minutes to Rules and Government Relations. Comments? All those in favor? Oh, Counselor Derrick, I apologize.
That's okay. I, I just want to take a second to address this recommendation.
We can't debate it right now, by the way.
Just making a comment.
Okay.
Isn't that what the comment portion's for? I agree with the sentiment of this. As clerk, as of the ordinance subcommittee, I'm frequently tardy with my own minutes. And it's not something I'm proud of, but I also think that, and I agree, it's important to provide transparency, record-keeping, information to the public. You know, we're a legislative body of full-time working people, and I know everyone here is very dedicated to their positions as counselors. We also have full-time jobs that take up forty, fifty, sixty hours a week. That's also coupled with personal and family obligations. And I have concerns about this, such as, some of our committees, yes?
I believe this is out of order in that this can be debated at committee level and then at the next meeting. I would rather we did that at that point, because we haven't even discussed it. That's just my point.
I'll, I'll withdraw my comment. I have concerns, I think it's thoughtful, though, and I think it is an issue that needs to be addressed, just so you know. So I will attend the meeting.
Okay, great.
Point of information, question?
Absolutely.
For the President?
You had said that any one of the public could ask for the minutes within ten days, after ten days from the meeting. Does that mean that if they're in no draft form, is there an obligation to present minutes at that point?
According, according to the Attorney General, there, the law states that a person can request them, whether they have been approved, whether they are in draft, and my assumption would be that if they are asked for within ten days, we would have to come up with a draft. We, I don't think we have the option of saying no, according to the law.
So it would seem that ten days might be the number you would...
I think that's going to be an exception, and that might be a little too aggressive.
Just...
Yeah, no, I hear you.
Wanted to point that out.
You could be the clerk of the property. Counselor Riss?
On that line, I imagine that if someone asked for minutes that were not yet sent to the clerk, the clerk would call that chair and say, "We need the minutes, someone's asking for them," and then therefore that clerk of that committee would have to produce them immediately.
Yes.
So I imagine that's the scenario that, moving forward along those lines.
And really, my purpose in putting it in here was that I didn't know it, until I was reading the law, and so I was curious if we all understood that, and so we wouldn't be surprised if someone actually did come to us and say, "Hey, I want the minutes." It's part of the law. Okay. Did we have a motion?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
And then there's, I had suggested an amendment to our Rule five C. There was a little blurb I put in there. This is basically just, we, we discussed this a little bit last time about Rule five C, and how it should be applied, and to what it should be applied. And it was suggested that maybe I should submit something to, to clarify, so I went the, basically the, the most simple possible route on this, which is just to say that it applies to all of our business unless we as a council make the decision to override that rule on a specific issue. So that is something that I'm hoping we can also get to at our meeting on the seventeenth. But if there's any other questions about that, I'll move that we send that amendment to Rule five C, to the Rules and Government Relations Committee.
Second.
Motion a second to move Rule five C, as amended by Counselor Peake, to the Rules and Government Relations Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes. Okay, I think that is it for business. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
I think we have to sign the supplemental appropriations.